Hi, Mr. Walton.
Hello, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
They really want me to...
Good evening. Tonight, we conclude the public hearing portion of our budget process for the 2026 operating and capital budgets. We'll hear from the courts, sheriff, and the treasurer. When we get to the Q and A portion, I'd like the members to please only ask a few questions at a time to give everyone a chance, and we'll come back for additional questions if time permits. We'll begin this evening with President Judge Susan Avashovic de Luscente. Hello, Your Honor, how are you?
What a pronunciation thing.
I was worried about that.
(laughing) Thank you all, members. The members of county council who are here, maybe there's some more on the television, for your time tonight and for your continued support of the court, we sincerely appreciate it. I want to introduce... Hello? Hello? Now it is. I'm not talking close enough to it. I'd like to introduce the members of Court Administration who are here with me today: Chris Connors, District Court Administrator; Joe Astori, Deputy Court Administrator, Director of Government Affairs and Media Relations; we also have behind me Michelle Polis, our Fiscal Manager; Janice Dean, Deputy Court Administrator, Criminal Division; Russ Carlino, Deputy Court Administrator, Juvenile Family Division; and Tricia Sorg, Deputy Court Administrator, Adult Family Division. Now, I've been instructed by Mr. Paul Messina not to go over every single page in my handout, but I do want to just give you an overview of our operations so that you can appreciate and understand our budgetary needs. The Fifth Judicial District is composed of the Court of Common Pleas and all the magisterial district judges. We have forty-three Court of Common Pleas judges. We have eight new ones starting in '26, although one was appointed, so she's been there for a few months. We have forty-six magisterial district judges spread throughout the county, and we also have Pittsburgh Municipal Court, which is the venue for most city cases. The court has over eleven hundred employees. The Court of Common Pleas has four divisions. Each division has an administrative judge and an administrator to oversee the operations of the division. And now I'm in my handouts, but I'm going to... I will not bore you with every page. The first division is civil. Judge Alan Hertzberg is the administrative judge. Civil division here is hundreds upon hundreds of different types of civil actions. You know, everybody thinks personal injury, yes, medical malpractice, real estate assessment appeals, class actions, asbestos products liability, and the list goes on and on. Civil division last year resolved or brought to disposition over nineteen thousand cases. The civil division caseload is comprised of the general docket. New filings this year were six thousand three hundred and eighty-one, which is up five hundred from last year. The civil division judges and the general docket have jury trials, non-jury trials, they hear motions. They heard nine thousand general motions this year. That could be anything from a discovery issue, you know, failure to produce something. Also, part of civil division is arbitration. This year, we had ten thousand arbitration cases filed, which is two thousand more than we had last year. Arbitration is an expedited docket. Any case where a plaintiff is seeking fifty thousand dollars or less has to start an arbitration. It's kind of an expedited docket. There's relaxed rules of evidence. You can just submit doctor's reports, doctor's bills, estimates of repair, repair bills, without having accompanying testimony, and that's why it's expedited. Our arbitration is very successful. Only twenty-seven percent of our arbitration decisions are appealed. When they're appealed, they go to a judge for a non-jury or a jury trial. Civil division also covers the Board of Viewers. We had fourteen hundred new tax assessment filings this year, and we disposed of two thousand three hundred and forty-three tax appeals this year. Landlord-tenant is also covered in the civil division. I think I told you last year about our housing court. The help desk is now completely operational. It's a separate desk in the Department of Court Records. It provides information about court procedures, forms, investigating case status. Also, the help desk interfaces with the magisterial district courts as well as the Department of Court Records staff. The beauty of it is it's a one-stop shop, and the litigants just go to the help desk. There's every single form that they would ever need to file in fillable format. They can get all the information that they need. And it's really important mostly for self-represented litigants because the way it used to be, you'd have to go to ten different stops, and it was very difficult to navigate the court filings and court procedures. So, we're really proud of the help desk. It substantially reduces delays. Litigants mostly can appear virtually, and all the procedures are very layperson-friendly. We also have a helpline telephone number and a helpline, help email, where anybody can contact the help desk, and the emails and telephone calls are answered the same day if possible, or at least in one business day. Next, we have Criminal Division. Bruce Beamer is our administrative judge in Criminal Division, and Janice Dean is our administrator. This year, we had nine thousand five hundred and three cases filed, which is an increase of seven hundred cases from last year. The total cases disposed of this year were ten thousand one hundred and fifty-five. How were they disposed of? Twenty-five percent were disposed of by an expedited court docket. That includes Phoenix Court and early disposition program. We have one judge handling that expedited docket, and it's mostly for low-level, non-violent cases. Get the trial dated early, get the discovery early, and get a plea or a trial. Sixteen percent of our cases were disposed of by ARD, which is accelerated rehabilitative disposition. That is for first-time offenders, non-violent crimes. That is offered to defendants in the discretion of the district attorney, but once you complete your probation, your record is expunged like it never even happened. That leaves sixty percent of the cases to be disposed of, and they're disposed of either through general trial or through a problem-solving court. Page ten of the handout just shows you what's the most frequent kind of case that's scheduled for a jury trial: homicide, guns, and drugs, not surprisingly. Page eleven of the handout shows you the medium time to disposition since 2021 for a criminal case, and this is from the MD, when the case is filed at the magisterial district judge through its disposition. So, it was really high in '21, you'll see, it took three hundred and twelve days. We got it down in '23 to two hundred and fifty-three days, and now it's creeping back up, it's two hundred and eighty-five days. So, we have a thirty-day increase in all case dispositions since 2023, and that can result in a lot of extra days that somebody is in jail, if they're incarcerated, pre-trial. I can get into that in more detail, the reasons for that, after I get through these slides. So, problem-solving courts. We have seven problem-solving courts: Drug Court, DUI Court, Sex Offender Court, Mental Health Court, Veterans Court, et cetera. Page thirteen of the handout. These courts are very time and resource-intensive, and every single court, the schedule varies, but the main theme is that the court is conducting regular reviews, where the whole team is there. So, the defendant is coming in, meeting with the judge, meeting with probation, meeting with the team, and their progress is reviewed. And if they had a failure, that's reviewed too, and the team tries to get to the root of it and get the person the help that they need so that they don't fail again. And the goal is to intensively work with everybody so that they do not reoffend after they graduate. I myself oversee Veterans Court, and most of the veterans have either a mental health or a drug and alcohol issue. We get them into treatment. We just had Veterans Court graduation yesterday. It was really a moving event because the veterans are so grateful for the time and the effort that the team puts in, and obviously, they graduated, so they are in recovery. They are on their mental health medication, and they're doing very well. We also help them with anything else they might need. You need housing, you need transportation, you need food, we refer them for whatever their needs are. The Duquesne Law Clinic participates in Veterans Court. They help the veterans with any kind of issues that they might have outside of criminal. So, they'll help them with support, they'll help them with custody, they'll help them get their license restored with PENDOT. Very time-intensive, but very successful. Probation, I'm going to talk about next, that's on page twelve. Right now, we have, as of 9:30, 25, we have fourteen thousand three hundred and ninety people on probation, whether it's after sentencing or pre-trial. We have a hundred and thirty-nine probation officers, and our probation officers' workload have really increased substantially just in the last few years because best practices have shifted to a restorative collaborative coaching method similar to the specialty courts, but not as intensive. So, in other words, the probation officers are developing relationships with their, with the defendants and trying to help them. They're not just being a referee and sitting back and doing nothing and waiting for them to make a mistake, and then let's punish them, okay? They get involved, try and help find what are their needs and how can we help you so that you will successfully complete probation. Another very time-intensive requirement that the Pennsylvania Legislature imposed on probation officers across the state was Act forty-four. Briefly, there are certain cases, not all of them, but once the defendant is halfway through his probation, there has to be a review, and if the defendant is successful, I'm grossly oversimplifying this, but if the defendant is successful, the case gets closed halfway through. So, the probation officers, that's a lot more work because they have to have more contact to ensure compliance, they have to submit reports, and then they could have to attend hearings on closing. I'm sorry, I'm not going fast enough. All right, page fourteen, pre-trial services. I would just note on that page that this year, there were twenty-two thousand eight hundred and eleven new pre-trial investigations. There were also four thousand one hundred and twenty-three bail modification cases. And just to remind you all, or to let you know, whenever bail is set by a magisterial district judge, our pre-trial unit reviews every single case. And if our pre-trial unit thinks, oh, this is too high, this person should be out of jail, they bring a motion themselves to the Court of Common Pleas to get that bail modified. So, they did that four thousand one hundred and twenty-three times this last year. And also, I remind you that we have walk-in reinstatements, and that is where, when somebody has a warrant for their arrest, if they go and turn themselves into pre-trial, they can go on their way, get their new court date, whatever else. If we didn't have that, they'd have to turn themselves into jail, and they'd be in jail for seventy-two hours, when they would have a hearing in front of a judge and get out of jail. So, that's four hundred and four people who didn't go to jail for three days last year. Other jail-saving measures: electronic monitoring. We've calculated that we have saved three hundred two thousand nine hundred and three days in jail by the utilization of electronic monitoring. We also utilize the DUI Alternative to Jail Program. If somebody, a lot of DUI offenses carry mandatory jail terms, some of them forty-eight hours, seventy-two hours. When somebody is, has to get that sentence because it's required by law, we give them the option of the DUI Hotel, it's commonly known as, that they could go there and get credit for their sentence instead of going to jail. So, by utilizing that program, we've saved eight hundred and sixty-eight jail days. And I also would say, we also try to get defendants, detainers lifted, and also at the time of their preliminary arraignments, by having interviews and assessors who, from probation for, when they're detained, who will see if this person has a drug and alcohol problem or has a mental health problem, and can we divert this person from the jail and get them to treatment. And I don't know the stats exactly on how many people are diverted, but it saves, saves more jail expense. Next is the Family Division, Adult Family. Catherine Hans Greco is the administrative judge, and Tricia Sorg, who's here, is the administrator. The first thing, the first page is eighteen. One of Adult Family Division's functions is spousal and child support, and we have a very, very successful program. Ninety-two point six-two percent of our support cases actually have orders, and our current support collection rate is eighty percent. This is due to the hard work of Trish Sorg, her whole department, and all the judges. And because, because of all their, not because of, but Allegheny County is considered the number-one urban jurisdiction in support matters in the entire country, okay? I mean, we're really proud of what they have done, and because of what they have done in their performance, we get approximately four million dollars in federal incentive money. So, that's also very helpful. This year, we collected almost seventy-eight million dollars in child support and spousal support. Adult Family, in addition to the original child support complaint, they hear modifications when people file to modify their support order. They hear contempt when somebody's not paying their support order. Adult Family also does divorce. The divorce filings this year are six hundred less than last year. I don't know if that's a first, but maybe, maybe we have a benefit of our economic crisis. People aren't getting divorced as much. Adult Family does protection from abuse. That's when a family or intimate partner abuses somebody, they can go to court and get a protection from abuse order, that that person can have no contact with them for up to three years. That also can include pets now, which makes me very happy that pets are included in there. We hear indirect criminal contempt hearings for violations of PFAs, which unfortunately is pretty high. This past reporting period, eighteen hundred cases. Adult Family also hears custody cases, that includes an original custody complaint. Then oftentimes, there's a modification, some party wants to modify the custody order, and then there's also contempt and enforcement petitions, and there were one thousand six hundred and fifty-eight is the total of those matters that were heard last year. The next division I'd like to talk about is the Juvenile Section of Family Division. Russ Carlino, who is here, is our administrator. What does the Juvenile Section handle? It handles dependency and delinquency. What is dependency? When a child is without proper parental care or control, when a child is abandoned, when a child is abused or neglected, or when a child is habitually truant. This year, five hundred and two children were adjudicated dependent. We also had this year five hundred and sixty-nine emergency custody authorization requests. We have a judge on call around the clock, twenty-four seven, and so if the police or CYF encounter a child in danger, they can call the judge and get authorization to remove the child. When a child is removed, the goal is always reunification with the parents. There's review hearings every ninety days to see how the parent is doing. First, obviously, what is the issue, and then let's work on this issue so that you can be re-unified with your child. Sometimes, the child remains in the home when a dependency is going on, but if the child is removed, the first goal is always to place that child with family. The goal is kinship care first. Also, like I said, the goal's reunification, but that's not always possible. And if you can't reunify the child and the parents in a reasonable amount of time, then the goal gets changed to adoption because a child is entitled to permanency in his or her life. And we had a hundred and thirty-eight adoptions last year. Delinquency. A child is delinquent when he or she has committed a criminal act and requires treatment, supervision, or rehabilitation. As of 9:30, 2025, we had one thousand seventy-one active youth on juvenile probation. This year, three hundred and twenty-five minors were adjudicated delinquent, and once they're adjudicated delinquent, they can either be on probation and stay in the home, they can go to day treatment, they can go to private placement, they can go to state placement. There's a whole array of, in treatment options, depending on the particular circumstances of the case. We also have consent decrees for juveniles. We had two hundred and fourteen of those this year, and a consent decree is very similar to ARD in the adult criminal world. As long as you successfully complete your probation, then you don't have a record of having a juvenile adjudication. On 10/1 of '25, we had a hundred and fifteen juveniles on electronic monitoring. Fifty-seven percent of them had firearms offenses or violent felony offenses. This past year, we had a total of six hundred and forty juveniles connected to electronic monitoring. Of that six hundred and forty, a hundred and thirty-three absconded. They cut off their bracelet, they let their battery die, or just took off. Twenty-five of the hundred and thirty-three absconded multiple times. So, they got their bracelet, they took off, we apprehended them, we put the bracelet back on, and they did it again. Some of them did it three to four times during the period. You know, unfortunately, because Schuman is not open, or there's only twelve beds, just as we were last year, still stuck with the twelve, we're still stuck there this year, and it's a problem because electronic monitoring is not always effective. As of October 13 of '25, we had nineteen individuals in the Allegheny County Jail who were under eighteen at the time they committed their offense. So, on that day, 10/13/25, they might now be nineteen, but when they committed the offense, they were a minor. So, we have nineteen people in jail, minors in jail at that time. The charges for those juveniles, for the nineteen, six homicide, two attempted homicide, five robbery with a deadly weapon, six aggravated assault with a deadly weapon. So, these are very, very serious charges, and it's not the best practice, or I should, we would rather have them be in Schuman. Schuman was designated to have two interest-of-justice pods, which would be twenty-four beds for these kids who would, are now in jail. So, they're still in jail because nothing's been built. As far as I know, there's not going to be another bed open in Schuman until late '27 or '28. Right now, I'm on page twenty-nine. We do have twenty-six youth, okay, in detention, twelve are at Schuman. The rest of them are at facilities in other counties, and the only reason we have them, those other beds in those other counties, is due to the diligent work of Russ Carlino and the relationships that he's developed, because otherwise, they'd probably be on electronic monitoring. Then there's some statistics, you know, about the numbers of probation officers, information regarding diversionary programs. One program I would like to mention is CISP. That's a program for minors. It's either a step up from probation, or it's a step down from residential treatment. So, if a youth is on probation and they're not doing well, you can step them up to CISP instead of putting them in a residential place. instead of putting them in a residential placement. If a kid has been in residential placement, sometimes you want to step them down to CISP before you just let them go with, you know, no help other than probation. So CISP is a program from after school until like 9:00 or 10:00 at night. And so from after school, these children are at their program, they're doing, getting tutoring, they're doing credit recovery, they're getting Vo-Tec training, they are getting career training, they're also, for instance, aggression replacement training. There's, it's therapeutic also. And finally, they do community service, and which, the goal is to get them connected to their community and invested in their community. And it's a very successful program. Next is Orphans Court, where I am the administrative judge, and Daniel Coons is the administrator. Orphans Court handles a multitude of matters, but primarily cases dealing with wills, trusts, and estates of deceased persons, actions pertaining to an agent's exercise of power of attorney. Usually, it's an abuse of a power of attorney. They've stolen, you know, money from the person. We also handle involuntary commitment of persons alleged to be mentally ill and in need of psychiatric treatment. There's some statistics of note, and what I wanted to call your attention to, is that next year, we're starting a program called AOT, Assisted Outpatient Treatment, because a lot of people fall through the cracks, okay? To be civilly committed, you have to be severely mentally disabled, and you have to be a clear and present danger to yourself or others. So basically, you have to be homicidal or suicidal, all right? So a lot of people don't meet that. So AOT is to catch these individuals. Generally speaking, it's individuals who don't take their medication. We see this as a lot of a revolving door in the jail. They, people take their medication, they're doing really, really well, and then they stop taking it. They end up committing a crime, they're back in jail. So AOT is designed to have these people come into court, get them to stay on their medication before they commit a crime and go back to jail, because we can't do that now under the civil commitment law. And last, Bill Petula, he's our deputy court administrator of Magisterial District Courts. I said we had 46 MDJs. Total filings last year were almost 193,000. Criminal filings were 23,995. So you can see that of the criminal filings, less than half of them make it downtown. The magistrates dispose of a lot more than half of the criminal cases that start. Did I meet your requirements, Bob?
You certainly did. That's a lot to take on. I think I'm going to ask three questions first.
Okay.
On page 14, number of bail modification cases, 4123.
Yes.
Is that out of 22,811, or what, what number is that out of? I'm just trying, I'm just trying to see the percentage.
Oh, I'm going to defer to Janice Dean, because it does say new pre-trial investigations, 22,000, but that's not all new cases.
Okay.
Okay, so it could be somebody who's in there on a detainer. Do you follow me?
Okay.
So 22,000 is not all new cases.
Okay. And are they allowed to up the bail, or bring it down? Are they allowed to do both?
Well, yes, they could do, but Court of Common Pleas can do either one, yes.
Okay, I did not know that. And then the other question I have was, where are we at here? Page 5, you said there's 2,000 more arbitration cases than last year.
Yes.
Page 4, there was 500, 500 more of the general docket, and then there was another one on another page. Is that common?
That it keeps going up?
To go up that number, that high?
Well, you know what? I've only been the president judge for two years, so I don't really know. Do you know?
I don't know. I mean, I can find out.
Yeah, I'm just curious, that's all. And then my third question was on page 12. Average 268 low-risk per officer. Is that one person managing 268 cases?
Yes.
Wow.
And then those are low-risk cases, okay, which would include maybe a case where the only obligation under probation, obviously not to commit another crime.
Right.
But is to pay restitution, maybe. So those kind of cases do not require a lot of oversight.
Okay, okay.
Okay?
That's all I have. I'm going to go to my left, Councilman Walton.
I don't know if I have substantive questions as opposed to comments. I want to first say that the tasks and the challenges that the courts face are not for you. And I, because of the work that I do during my other work, my other job, I encounter a number of individuals that have had interactions with the courts, whether through probation and those processes. And I think that your officers, your probation officers, your system works, for the most part, well. To try to evaluate and make assessments that are needed to make to determine whether or not an individual is committed to transforming their lives is a challenge to the judge, to the, to the judges, and to the probation officers, and to the entire system. I haven't had an opportunity to meet with you, but I do have, I have an opportunity to talk with Judge Lozaro and some of the other criminal court judges. And I'd like to schedule a meeting with you so we can, so I can try to use the resources that are at my disposal to, to try to continue to transform people's lives and improve both the quality and the quantity of folks' lives here in Allegheny County. So.
What I'm gonna, I'm not in Criminal Division anymore. I'm in Orphans Court, but I kept Veterans Court, so I still do Veterans Court. But I think it might be a great idea for you to go to a criminal judges' meeting.
I have been, I haven't been to a, to a criminal court judges' meeting in probably about six or eight months or so, but I have been going to those on a routine basis. And I, I think that we have to use all the tools in our tool bag.
Hundred percent.
Try to give, give folk an opportunity to, to give and take advantage of second chances. I have, I work with, with a number of employers that will hire individuals at families sustaining wages and union jobs with defined benefit pension plans and the like, to, to give folk real second chances. And I like to, to rebuild or renew those kinds, that kind of relationships. So I'll reach out to you.
Reach out to me. Also, we're going to have four new judges in Criminal, so they don't know anything about this.
Very much so.
So please do.
Thank you. And my last question is, since this is a budget hearing, what do you ask? I don't see that here for the budget.
I think it's 2.2 or something?
The Executive's Office gave us 2.4 or 2. How about this is like the most important number, 2.49?
Yeah, I knew that.
I'll reach out to you.
Okay, thank you.
Give me a minute. I'm just going to.
Do what you done?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Filiagi, I'll go to you, and I'll go to Jordan next.
Thank you very much, Chairman Palmasina. And thank you very much. I think you know that I'm grateful. I, I know we have a relationship that I see you guys more than just once a year, so, and I've told you how grateful I am, and this is a specific, this, the courts are very special to me, so, and reach out to me if there's something that I can do. The Schuman Highlands is also problematic and very worrisome to me and other members of council. And I guess we're just going to need to renew our, the word isn't pressure, but renew this with the executive and make sure that we can somehow convince her that this is a priority for the county. And your highlighting it is very clear here, and we will, we will assist you on that. I think that we can get some assistance on that, so we'll do that. Also, to piggyback off of Councilwoman Walton's expression that he wants to give second chances, I think also looking at opportunities to increase expungement opportunities that can come from the courts, the council, the public defender's office, might be something we can investigate with the courts as well. And I, because I know that's a project that's very important to you as well. And, and it seems like we should have a lot more of these expungement opportunities than we do, so maybe we can see if we can partner in that aspect. And then the last question is, I noticed on the back page, which is, to put my glasses on, 38, the criminal case filings, 23,995. Do we have the numbers on what it was last year? Because I don't have that. Is it an increase, decrease, significant, insignificant? And it doesn't need to be given to me now. It would be something that maybe we can, council can use in our toolbox to make some arguments for more things for the courts going down the pike. We do still have some line item opportunities before us, before this budget passes. So if maybe you can get that information to us.
I have the number.
Okay, great.
It was 22,890.
22,000?
Eight-hundred-and-ninety.
Eight-hundred-and-ninety.
Okay. And then overall, if you're looking at last year's, the total filings themselves, do we have a number, can you give me a comparison for last year as well?
You mean in Court of Common Pleas?
Yes.
The criminal cases?
Oh, no, no, no. Like, do you have a comparable page, comparable page 38 for last year?
Page 38.
So all?
All the magistrates. Yes, I do, and I'll just give you mine.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. And just again, it's collecting data. We like to say that we're being educated, and just, this information will help us making arguments on behalf of the citizens of Allegheny County in the future. Thank you very much.
Okay, my pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan. You're welcome. Councilman Bada.
Thank you, Chairman Palmasina, and thank you, President Judge, and Mr. Connors and Mr. Stock for being here. I will keep this brief. I only have one question specifically regarding protection from abuse. I have heard from a number of constituents that PFA orders are extremely difficult to obtain in some cases. I'm not sure if that has been the experience of the court, but I just wanted to bring this up as a, as a result of constituents having reached out to me, that the process is a little bit obfuscated, and I had somebody who was not able to get a PFA for several weeks, that it was rescinded or that it was overturned, and then the process just went over and over again, and it was a terrible experience for them. So if you could just walk through the process as it happens in the courts.
Okay, well, if it's off-hours, non-business hours, you go to Pittsburgh Municipal Court, and you can get an emergency PFA that lasts until the next, the end of the next day the court is open, okay? If it's during regular court hours, you go to the Court of Common Pleas. We have a PFA department. We have victims, advocates, thank you, who help the person, okay, fill out the paperwork, review what happened, and also, you know, to provide assistance if they need assistance with, with anything. But in any event, you then complete your petition, it goes in front of a judge that day, and if it's granted, you have a temporary PFA that lasts for 10 days. Now, our stats here show that 87% of the temporary PFA petitions last year were granted. That's on page 20, okay? So 80, I don't know about the MDJs, but Family Division, 87% are granted. So you get your temporary PFA for 10 days, there's a hearing scheduled on the 10th day, because then the defendant has to be served with a copy of the petition between that time and can come and contest it. A lot of times, they're worked out, you know, with a consent order of some sort, or they go to a hearing in front of a judge, and the judge decides, should you have a PFA or not? So that seems odd to me that, I, I, you know, there's always an odd case if something goes awry, but.
Sure, and I don't think that this is a condemnation of your leadership or how the department overall functions. I think that some of these cases that sort of slip between the cracks are perfect examples of how you can improve on the process itself. And so I'd love to speak with you or someone else in your office afterwards to sort of walk through exactly what happened with one of these constituents.
Okay. Well, Trish Sorg is here, and she is stellar, so she'll get to the bottom of it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. President Catina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Judge, I'm just going to ask you one line of questioning, and you probably know what it's about already, because I think we both share the same sense of urgency regarding Highland Detention Center reopening to maximum capacity. Can you tell me how involved in the courts have you been recently over the proposal that was put out? I mean, can you give me any, any ideas on what the courts have been involved in, or?
We have very minimal involvement in any planning, and I'm going to defer to Russ Carlini, because the, he has the most involvement. Do you mind, Russ?
No, I would agree. We are at the table, but we don't, we're not making decisions on what is being requested or how much money is being requested. So we're aware of it, we have, we have some input, but those decisions are made by the court.
In a nutshell, the state, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, the state approved money, okay, to get this thing operational. The plan was approved, and then the plan was totally changed, and the new plan was going to cost a lot more money, and the state didn't approve it. And that's the reason for the delay. And correct me if I'm wrong, somebody.
No, that's correct.
Okay. And we didn't have anything to do with the new plan.
So we had a plan, and just, just, I'm going to repeat what you said, just so my, for my understanding. We had a plan, it was basically paid for by the state, or was going to be paid for by the state, and we decided to go back and, the administration or whoever decided to go back and change things, and that's when things sort of went kaboom, basically.
The price went way, I'm not sure if the state funds the entire project, but whatever the funding, whatever percentage or however that works, it was approved.
So that would have gotten us up to 60, if the original plan would have gotten us up to full capacity then, or no?
What was the schedule on that, Russ? Do you know?
We should have had, yeah, by now, I was had expected the five pods to be open.
Yeah.
As originally envisioned.
Yeah, the whole place should be completed by now.
So for a county of 1.2, roughly 1.3 million residents, we only have 12 juvenile detention beds in all of Allegheny County.
Correct.
And we spent millions of dollars on it.
And what is, I mean, what are we doing? I mean, we're just outsourcing, or we're just, I mean, I know that, I know the ankle bracelets and all of that, but what else, what else is going on?
Russ Carlini, okay, has acquired 14 more beds for us in other counties, for a total of 26, but that's it. They're fully occupied. There's no other recourse but electronic monitoring. And this has been going on for a long time.
Because I'm hearing from my police chiefs across, I'm hearing from police chiefs across the county, that, from the municipalities, that the beds are full by the time 11, 12 o'clock rolls around. I mean, can you confirm pretty much that's accurate?
So we have the 12 beds, we have the Highlands, we have the Schuman, our no eject, no reject with the Delphi. All the other beds that we have, in contrast with, the provider can say yes or no. And so we have the most dangerous kids, in some cases, not getting accepted. So we run into the problem of filling up 12 beds at Highlands, and then you have a dangerous offender who's arrested, we can't get him into another detention bed. So, yeah, that's, that's a problem. We have only 12 beds at Highlands, formerly Schuman, that are no eject, reject. That's, that's all we have. It's not nearly enough. Those are all male beds, too. We don't have any female beds in that, in that unit right now. We don't have any female beds in that unit right now.
And does anyone have any ideas how to expedite things? I mean, I'm certainly open to any ideas that anyone has.
Well, I think that it's being worked on. I think a new plan is, I'm really not sure.
I'm hearing 2028, though, is the next date.
Currently, you know, and Russ Carlino's involved in this, we briefed the President Judge, but currently, I strongly feel we're moving in the right direction, okay? I think all people are basically on the same page. I know people are frustrated with the time that it's taken, but, you know, rather than well into the past, currently where we are, the administration, the court, we are working together, okay, to try to get this open as soon as possible. It's not an easy task, obviously. Not only is it expensive, but there's a lot of moving components to that. But I am confident, from the court's side, that we're moving in the right direction. To the judge's point, an educated guess, I would think, pods two and three would possibly be open sometime, hopefully early to mid '27. Correct me if I'm wrong, Russ.
I think that's optimistic, but I hope so.
Because I heard '28 at the earliest.
But I mean, none of us have a crystal ball. You know, we are working diligently with the administration.
So whatever we can do to help move that effort along, we're more than happy to do so. So, thank you, Judge. That's all of the questions I have.
Thank you, President Catina. Councilman Grisbeck.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Only have one question pertaining to the actual budget itself. President Judge, you had mentioned that your amount allocated this year was about 99.8 million, so a 2.5% increase. Was that the full amount that you all had requested, or did you request a higher amount initially from administration, and that's what you were given?
We requested 8%, correct, Chris?
You said 8% is what you requested?
Yes.
Okay, and then that deviation, which, back of the head math would be like, I don't know, 5.5 million or something like that, where would that 5.5 million have gone that you weren't able to now utilize?
Well, 75% of our budget is personnel, so a large portion, I would say, would go to personnel. Another area that we're concerned with is court-appointed counsel. We're scheduled to be over budget at the end of this year in that category by $525,000. And next year, we were cut another million, and we're scheduled to be over budget 853,000 by the end of next year. Now, having said that, I'm just raising that as something that concerns us, but obviously, we attempt to save in other areas so that the end result is not going to be a deficit. But because you asked me that question, I pointed it out, it's a concern to us, but we'll try to live with our budget like we always do. But that's one other issue.
Understood. So court-appointed counsel and then additional staff that I assume would be able to let you all move through, you know, the case log quicker than you're currently able to? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dan. Councilwoman Hallam.
Thank you so much, Chairman Palmasina. Judge, I'm so sorry I am not there in person today, I had a work event, but I'm very happy to hear your presentation. It was really informative. I also agree with you about, like, can we please get Schuman done so we can get the kids out of the jail? My question is about, we keep hearing from the county manager's office, from the county executive, that there is some grand plan to reduce the jail population, because as I'm sure you know, the jail population is skyrocketing. There's a 5% increase in the jail's budget for this year since last year. And I just want to know, like, what role the courts are playing in that plan to reduce the jail population and get costs down, and how we can help you.
Okay. First of all, why is the jail population up? Criminal filings are up. They're up 21% since '22. The average time for case disposition has increased by 30 days between 2023 and 2025. And this really goes hand in hand with what the district attorney told you, because if all the players in the system don't have adequate funding, then you get a bottleneck. So I'm not commenting on anybody's budget. I have no idea what the budget is and who got what, and if it's, you know, what they should get. But what I am going to say is that it is correct that the DA's office is having a real struggle turning over discovery. And the court can't move a case, and a defense counsel can't move a case when they don't have the discovery. And the problem is, you know, all this technology in recent years, we have body cam, we have police dash cam, we have surveillance cameras on every corner. I mean, you're on a camera when you walk outside. We have cell phone dumps. So, I mean, there's such an inordinate amount of data that the DA's office has to go through, redact, and then get to the defendant, that I truly believe that that's creating a bottleneck. You know, you have to remember that you have the DA who's prosecuting every single case, and then on the other side, there's four buckets. There's the public defender, there's private defense counsel, there's conflict counsel, and there's court-appointed counsel. So the DA's handling all of these cases, that is a problem. I mean, and the more technology we get, the worse it seems that it will be. But let me tell you what we have done, and what we intend to do. We intend to now schedule detainer hearings on the same day as the sentencing on a new offense. So in other words, right now, the person who has a detainer could plead and be sentenced, or however the case is resolved, and they don't have a detainer hearing for a week or another two weeks, or whatever it is. So we're going to get them scheduled on the same day, which should really help. We're also working on adding a second motions judge to expedite the handling of bond modification motions, to reduce the time that it takes to get the motion in front of the judge. Also, we now, we already do have judges on call 24/7, but now those criminal judges that are on call are able to be contacted directly by the Allegheny County Jail for requests to release a medically compromised inmate. We just started a competency court, and this is kind of a fast-track court for those identified by pre-trials having a serious mental illness. You know, what happens now is, it's not fast-tracked, let's say, you have to get in front, the person has to get in front of a judge for a competency hearing. Are they competent to stand trial, or are they not competent to stand trial? And if they're not competent to stand trial, and they are restorable, they sit in jail and wait and wait and wait and wait and wait for a better torrent. And that's the only place to put them, because the state has closed everything else down, okay? So we're going to fast-track these cases to get an adjudication of competency faster, okay? Judge Lazara, who has really worked very hard to get this competency court in place, and she also oversees mental health court, so she's going to do the competency hearings. So this, combined with the mobile competency restoration unit, okay, is really, we're hoping, going to reduce this jail population, because the mobile competency unit attempts to restore people to competency in the community, or in the jails, if they're still in the jail, but they're not sitting waiting to go to torrents, okay? And since we began the mobile competency unit, the number of people on the waiting list to get into torrents has been almost cut in half. So that's been pretty effective. Also, pre-arrangement diversion is a new program. It just began last month, and at, when the MDJ has a preliminary arraignment, there's going to be assessors there in intake at the jail to meet with the defendants and see if they can be diverted to DNA or mental health treatment and not put them in jail. The court also worked with the jail to devise a system where the inmates who are in there can review their discovery, and the jail cooperated 100%. They now have computers in the jail, and the discovery to the defendant is delivered on a flash drive, flash drive, so they can sign up to review their discovery. Under the old policy, they had, we had laptops, and there was a big, long waiting list for laptops that went from defendant to the next defendant. We have also talked to the warden about enacting a policy where other counties are charged a per diem rate when they don't pick up their detainees in a timely fashion. Now, I don't know the exact specifics, but Westmoreland County just enacted a policy that I'm pretty sure says, pick up your person or we're letting them go, okay? All right. I just had a case in Veterans Court yesterday, and I wanted to talk to the warden about this, and I didn't have a chance. I remember the dates. He's detained, okay? On August 27, I signed an order for him to go to alternative housing. He had a hold by Westmoreland County, okay? So he couldn't go to alternative housing. Westmoreland County had a hold on him. When did Westmoreland County mosey on down here and pick him up? October 27. So we footed the bill for two months, two months, for a Westmoreland County detainee, okay? They came and got him on the 27th, he was sentenced on the 5th and returned, and now he can go to alternative housing. So I don't know the prevalence of this, you could get that from the jail, but, I mean, it is a problem. And that is the end of my list. But I knew you would ask me that question, Bethany, and I had a list.
Judge, I can tell, that was a great answer. I can tell you knew I was going to ask that. And honestly, like, really awesome to hear about, like, the second motion, Judge, to reduce bonds, and I really, really, really love the work to, like, get folks who are waiting for torrents out of the jail. I guess what I'm wondering about is, I mean, you know, we get the same population report, you know, at our jail oversight board meeting every month, and overwhelmingly, people are in there on detainers. And so, you know, I understand the increase in criminal filings, but like, the folks who, like, are in there because they're detained because they got new charges, and they got a bond on those new charges, so obviously not a danger to the community, no threat to public safety. What about reducing those types of situations and those types of detainers in the jail?
Well, you know, it's in the judge's discretion whether to lift a detainer or when to lift a detainer, and that is not something that anybody can control, it's the judge's discretion. But I will say this, I've been working with Judge Beamer, you know, with the understanding, like, hey, all you judges, can you, can you just take, take a better look? Okay? Like, take a better look at your report, maybe you have some people who should be That's the best answer I can give you, Bethany.
No, actually, a great answer, and truly very impressive list of things that you're working to do, like, that's really what I was looking for. Is there any opportunity for, like, judicial education about, you know, releasing people pre-trial to wait on the streets for their hearings to happen and their, you know, case to progress? Is there, like, a magistrate training, Court of Common Plea training? Is there anything like that we could maybe do?
Well, we have trainings all the time. I mean, judges are required to have continuing education, the magistrates go to school for an entire week every year. Could we consider a class on that topic? Sure we can.
We're an hour into this, right?
Okay, yeah, I think that would be a great idea, just teaching them, like, hey, this doesn't actually make any communities less safe if we just let them wait for trial on the street. But honestly, like, I don't want to take away from, like, you are doing so much, and I really, really appreciate that. And then my very last question is just my favorite question to ask. If I gave you a blank check for, to fund the courts, what would you prioritize spending money on that you, is not already in your existing budget?
Probably personnel.
And is that more justice or more like administrative staff?
Then I would take the rest of it and leave the country, Bethany.
Judge, don't say that, it's a public meeting. But thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Well, Your Honor, I want to thank you, and Joe, and Chris, and your staff. Very informative, very well done, under an hour. And I just want to thank you for all you do, because I know you have a very difficult job, and I hope you guys have a great evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff Kraus. And Deputy Manning.
How are you? Good morning.
Can't go wrong with crank. It's like your shirt.
By the way, congratulations on your, on your election. It could have been a little bit more convincing. It could have been a little bit more convincing. You only got like 70% of the voters.
Yeah, I didn't pay attention.
Sheriff Kraus, welcome. Where are you when you are?
Just first of all, I want to, for clarification, we didn't know we were dressing alike for this meeting. Full disclosure. We walked in in the morning, I'm like, oh, gosh.
Thank you, members of county council, for having us tonight. We appreciate this opportunity to discuss the sheriff's office and my commitment to operating efficiently without sacrificing the safety and law enforcement functions that our office provides to county personnel, the courts, and the citizens of Allegheny County. Ensuring the sheriff's office remains under budget every year is a top priority of mine, and we anticipate meeting our 2025 budget appropriation by using allocated capital, grants, and special accounts to meet the current needs of our office. But our 2026 operating budget request is to increase overall by $2 million to ensure essential operations are maintained. Our 2026 budget request will cover manpower needs to significantly increase the security without getting into too much detail, to implement a proactive approach to respond to any threats that would occur within our court facilities. We understand you had a chance to review our budget inquiry and presentation, therefore I'd like to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is a very nice-looking presentation. I love the greens, so you know. I'm going to go to my left again and go to Councilman Walton.
No, I just think you're doing a hell of a job, Sheriff, and I appreciate your work and your commitment to being an effective law enforcement officer, and equally as much, a great human being. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Well said.
I appreciate it.
Councilman Bada.
Thank you, Chairman Palmasina, and thank you, Sheriff. Congratulations on the election.
Thank you.
And thank you for, I think we all agree, we're grateful. I want to all, I want to mention a few things. I think that the most, one of your most recent hires, of the chief deputy, Ricky Manning, Richard Manning, sorry, was, you know, a stroke of genius, and it, because of his, he's really lifelong, he's younger than us, but his lifelong commitment to this industry. And it is, it is an industry, and you have to be wired for it, and compassion has to be woven in there without a doubt. And you've picked the right man, and I had no doubt that you would, but that. But this is also one very public example, but I also, working here in the courthouse now, doing some things, we've all gotten to know the deputies and the work that they do here, and we are impressed with the hiring period, some of them that are public, more public, and some of them that aren't. So it, and we get to see them firsthand.
Councilwoman Haddam.
Hello. Just one question. If I gave you a blank check and you could fund any pet projects or anything like that in your department, what would it be? And if it's a specific project, like, do you have any estimate of how much it would cost?
I would answer that very simply: training. I would use that check for training.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said?
I said, "Training."
Training.
Oh, awesome. For, like, your employees?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sheriff, I think that's... How many additional sheriffs are we thinking that you'd be needed to implement what you...
We asked for eight. But, I mean, I'll work with what I have to work with, you know? If it's less than eight, but we asked for eight.
Okay, we asked for eight. Okay, I also want to... I guess, see, the same thing that most of my colleagues said, your department speaks for itself. The folks back there in the back that are here every time we have a meeting, I always feel safe. I think that Chief Deputy Sheriff Manning was a great hire. His duty and what he's done over his career speaks for itself. I also want to say your Public Information Officer, Mike Manko, who was a schoolmate of mine, is second to none. I think he has helped that department come a long way, and your professionalism... It was tough taking over after Bill Mullen, but you stepped in on the ground running, and I want to thank you for all you do. Every time we reach out to you, you return our calls, so great job tonight. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
All right, thank you all.
You're welcome. Treasurer Bruce Lars, good evening. See you, Sheriff.
Bye, Sheriff.
See ya, Sheriff. Thank you. Sheriff Bruce Lars, good evening.
Sheriff Bruce Lars is here.
How are you?
I'm right in the lobby.
Treasurer Deblistition, how are you doing?
I'm well.
It's good to see you.
On you whenever you're ready.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks for having us here today.
Thanks for coming.
Good evening, counselors. Thanks for having us here to share our plans tonight. For those in the audience, I'm Eric Horoki-Brewslars. I serve as our Allegheny County Treasurer. With me, I have Debbie Listition, who serves as our Chief Deputy Treasurer. We have several colleagues joining us in the office, and I'll introduce them in a few minutes. We have prepared no more than 10 minutes' worth of comments on this presentation and the materials. In preparing for tonight, I watched our budget hearing from last year, some highlights. We started at 8:00 p.m. I talked for eight minutes about the office. I talked for 13 minutes about every single little thing we were gonna try to do this year, and then I ended it by saying, "I can't wait to see our 2026 budget." So here we are with our 2026 budget. I'm sure you all have had a chance to review, so I'll go through it a little quickly. The mission of the Treasurer's Office is to fulfill our duties by providing excellent customer service, efficiently collecting our taxes, safeguarding county funds while optimizing our investments, and working collaboratively with our county departments, and we operate with the principles of transparency, modernization, and collaboration. We're gonna touch on a few items today: good governance, investments, and community engagement, and we're happy to talk about any work that our office is doing. Our leadership team is now fully staffed, which was not the case last year, and our staff is here tonight. We have Debbie Listition, our Chief Deputy Treasurer, Debbie Gibson, our Director of Administration and Customer Service. Did Dan make it in? Dan's here. He's our Director of Cash and Treasury Management. He's new from last year. Michael Horvath is maybe waving his hand. He is our Director of Tax and Licensing. Valerie Rein taller is our Director of Team Transformation, and is Philip here?
No, he's still...
And our solicitor couldn't make it in today. We also have Maria Montano, our Manager of Public Affairs, Abby DiLoreto, my Special Assistant, and Adriana Brannan, our senior, my senior aide. So, did Shawan? And Shawan's watching eagerly. So that's our team. We're very excited. We feel like we can really start moving at a full speed now. Our office has worked on a lot of cross-training, so about a third of our staff, in a way they hadn't when we came into office, are able to do different tasks. So we've consolidated our cashiers. So we used to have ones that did licensing and ones that did, like, taxes and juror payments, and we're either cross-trained or getting cross-trained, and we've operated with that throughout our office, and that gives us additional backups, and it gives people a wider realm of things that they can work on. Also, in terms of good governance, we've brought a number of different cost savings this year. We've split these into this year, this year, next year, and the next year. So this year, we saw about $100,000 in savings related to bank fees. We also cut our costs from $150,000 last year on IT consultants to zero this year. We put together equitable practices for how we charge for the municipal file fee that led to another $100,000 in revenue. This year and next year, we're drawing down a pre-existing revenue account. $300,000 was used in this year's budget, which helped our this year's budget look better or be better. And next year, we're planning to draw down $420,000 again, and we'll do it at a similar rate until that account is empty. Strategically, and we're strategically deploying our staff, leading to an overall reduction in staffing costs. In 2026, we expect to see a few different buckets of savings. Our budget request was almost 2% lower for 2026 than it was for 2025, and this is coming from, we're making some savings by reducing contracted services, about $200,000, and we also expect to increase revenue by about $400,000 by moving to electronic payments as part of our AP process. Also in collaboration, working with a lot of departments, especially the Controller's Office and the Budget Office, we've increased our investment stability, and also those conversations have helped with RFP for banking services. We share insights with our banking partners at our investment and depository meetings, which helps everybody understand what we're doing and leads to discussions that often are better services for the people in Allegheny County. In partnership with the Controller, County Manager, and other row offices, we've decreased the number of paper pay stubs. I meant to check if you all had experienced this, the end of paper pay stubs. So about only 25% of our employees now receive these paper pay stubs, which is decreasing printing costs, paper costs. It's got a great environmental effect, and it's saving thousands of people hours across the county. So like, two people from courts used to come and pick up armfuls of boxes of pay stubs every pay period and take them back, and then they have to sort, like, what location all these people are at, and then get them out to all the locations. And now that they're just receiving the electronic file, the electronic pay notice from the Controller's Office and no longer a paper notice, they don't have to deploy staff to deal with handling all these notices. So that was very well received. In terms of investment, we have worked both within our office and with our consulting partner, Three Plus One, to increase how effectively we're investing money, and what that looks like in this table, and we could have highlighted it a little better, though it's all in black and white because we're cheap. We saved $60 in printing costs, printing these in black and white, not color. But between 2022 and 2025, our investments have gone from sort of being 57% effective, which might look like, out in the market, you could get a 2% return, but your account only gets a 1% return, so that's not great. So now we're more like getting, like, a 1.9% return when two overall is available. And the reason we're not hitting the two itself is that we're spreading across some different investment types to give us stability. We saw how engaged you all were with our community engagement and mobile offices, so we plotted them out across a county, which will probably lead to some equity across county council district questions, which we're happy to take. So we just wanted to highlight this, that we've been to over 200 community events this year. We have regular days that we are in Churchill, Clerton, Moon, Monrovel, Munhall, Wilkinsburg. Counsel Phili Agi is probably pointing out that there's only two in her district. So, but we will work on these things. And then I have the next slide's questions, but I did want to point out two slides in the back of the presentation. On page 15, it has the 2025 adopted budget compared to the budget request that we put to the Budget Office, and then what we were allocated with the comprehensive fiscal plan. It was just a very small trim by the Budget Office, and we're comfortable with it. We will point out that our expenditures are about 2% down, and with our revenue up, that's about an 8% overall, like, cost decrease by the Treasurer's Office. And then on page, I think it's 20... On page 28, we have a little information about the volunteer service tax credit that you all had passed in early 2024, and our office administered last year into this year. We're just starting the next season, and so that looked like 143 participating volunteer fire stations. We received over 1,900 applications. Close to 1,500 of them were approved. All rebate checks have been issued for folks who did all their paperwork correctly and submitted all the parts they needed. So over $600,000 in rebates were issued for an average of $438 per. And we are working... We heard your feedback about the number of steps and how cumbersome some of it is, so we are certainly working this year to make it a better, easier process for fire chiefs, and we have already started the outreach and received about 40 lists of eligible firefighters from departments. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. You mentioned outreach. How many public relations personnel do you have on staff?
Yeah, the Public Affairs Department is six people. Is that right? Six people.
And how many is that up from last year?
We finished hiring, so it's probably up two from last year.
So you had four last year?
We had four last year. I think technically, the departments were a little weird, but there were four people doing that variety of work last year.
Okay. And what's their role? What is their role?
Yeah. Their role is to do public outreach, to assist with our communications. They manage and deploy like our website. They assist with kind of developing strategies for things that are customer-facing. Am I missing anything? Yeah. Say that again? Oh, yeah. And one of the projects that they've started working on this year that we hope to be able to deploy more broadly next year is an unclaimed property project where we're reaching out to residents of the county who have unclaimed property with the state to let them know that that money exists and help them, like, get connected with it.
Okay. You mentioned also in your presentation, printing costs.
Yeah.
It's down?
Printing costs? A few things are happening with printing costs. Something I learned when I did a lot more research for this year's budget than I had on sort of non-personnel costs last year, is I found out how much we pay for in-office color copies versus black and white copies. So I expect our in-office costs to go down. We are working to consolidate a number of our printing services. We have a lot of mailings that go out, like dog license renewals, the licenses themselves, the property tax bills, which we've talked with, I know we talked about it a lot at the assessments hearing meeting. I'll speak a little bit about that. So that one, because there was a lot of concern, those bills went out later than we wanted in 2025, and they've gone out at a similar timing in 2024. We are almost finalized with the contract for a new print vendor for this coming tax season, who we expect will be able to meet the timeline of January 31st, and I expect to see about an $80,000 savings by moving to that vendor.
Is that public already? That RFP went out already?
The RFP went out. We received all the responses. We've completed the EA with the County Manager, and we're in the contract process, so we expect that contract will be done in a couple weeks.
Are you able to tell me if that's a non-union company or union company?
I'm... I don't even, I don't know if we're allowed to say who it is at this point, but I'm happy to touch base with you after to get you that information.
If you can. That's all I got.
Yep.
I'm gonna go to Councilman Walton.
I'll pass.
Councilman Botta.
Thank you, Chairman Paul Messina, and thank you for being here, Treasurer Bruce Lars. I just have a question about the line item. So if you look at line item 63005, Consultants, and 63010, Contracted Services, I'm assuming it's supposed to be General rather than Genera, unless that's a company?
Sorry, just the object description, is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
The object description is something that is not my purview, but which, could you tell me the number again?
Oh, so 63005 is Consultants?
Yep.
And then 63010, it says Contracted...
Services General.
General, okay. I didn't know if Genera was a company or something like that.
No, it is how either the Controller's Office or Budget put that in there.
Okay.
We have regular days that we are in Churchill, Clerton, Moon, Monrovel, Munhall, Wilkinsburg. Council Philaji is probably pointing out that there's only two in her district. So, but we will, we will work on these things. And then I have the next slide's questions, but I did want to point out two slides in the back of the presentation. On page 15 has our, it has the 2025 adopted budget compared to the budget request that we put to the Budget Office, and then what we were allocated with the comprehensive fiscal plan. It was just a very small trim by the Budget Office, and we're comfortable with it. We will point out that our expenditures are about 2% down, and with our revenue up, that's about an 8% overall, like, cost decrease by the Treasurer's Office. And then on page, I think it's 20, on page 28, we have a little information about the volunteer service tax credit that you all had passed in early 2024, and our office administered last year into this year. We're just starting the next season. And so that looked like 143 participating fire, volunteer fire stations. We received over 1,900 applications. Close to 1,500 of them were approved. All rebate checks have been issued for folks who did all their paperwork correctly and submitted all the parts they needed. So over $600,000 in rebates were issued for an average of $438 per. And we are working, we heard your feedback about the number of steps and how cumbersome some of it is, so we are certainly working this year to make it, make it a better, easier process for fire chiefs. And we have already started the outreach and received about 40 lists of eligible firefighters from departments. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. You mentioned outreach. How many public relations personnel do you have on staff?
Yeah, the Public Affairs Department is six people, is that right? Six people.
And how many is that up from last year?
We finished hiring, so it's probably up two from last year.
So you had four last year?
We had four last year. I think technically, the departments were a little weird, but there were four people doing that variety of work last year.
Okay. And what's, what's their role? What is their role?
Yeah. Their role is to do public outreach, to assist with our communications. They manage and deploy like our website. They assist with kind of developing strategies for things that are customer-facing. Am I missing anything? Yeah. Say that again? Oh, yeah. And one of the projects that they've started working on this year that we hope to be able to deploy more broadly next year is an unclaimed property project where we're reaching out to residents of the county who have unclaimed property with the state to let them know that that money exists and help them like get connected with it.
Okay. You mentioned also in your presentation, printing cost.
Yeah.
It's down?
Printing costs, a few things are happening with printing costs. Something I learned when I did a lot more research for this year's budget than I had on sort of non-personnel costs last year, is I found out how much we pay for in-office color copies versus black and white copies. So I expect our in-office costs to go down. We are working to consolidate a number of our printing services. We have a lot of mailings that go out, like dog license renewals, the licenses themselves, the property tax bills, which we've talked with, I know some, I know we talked about it a lot at the assessments hearing meeting. I'll speak a little bit about that. So that one, because there was a lot of concern, those bills went out later than we wanted in 2025, and they've gone out at a similar timing in 2024. We are almost finalized with the contract for a new print vendor for this coming tax season, who we expect will be able to meet the timeline of a January 31st, and I expect to see about an $80,000 savings by moving to that vendor.
Is that public already? That RFP went out already?
The RFP went out. We received all the responses. We've completed the EA with the County Manager, and we're in the contract process, so we expect that contract will be done in a couple weeks.
Are you able to tell me if that's a non-union company or union company?
I'm, I don't even, I don't know if we're allowed to say who it is at this point. But I'm happy to touch base with you after, to get you that information.
If you can. That's all I got.
Yep.
I'm going to go to Councilman Walton.
Mr. President.
Councilman Bada.
Thank you, Chairman Paul Messina. And thank you for being here, Treasurer Brussels. I just have a question about the line item. So if you look at line item 63005 Consultants and 63010 Contracted Services, I'm assuming it's supposed to be general rather than Genera, unless that's a company?
Sorry, these, just the object description, is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
The object description is something that is not my purview, but which, could you tell me the number again?
Oh, so 63005 is consultants?
Yep.
And then 63010, it says contracted, I'm assuming this is-
Services general.
General, okay. I didn't know if Genera was a company or something like-
No, it is how either the Controller's Office or Budget put that in there.
Okay. So the combined total between the two of them is approximately $424,000. Could you explain what consultants and contracted services are utilized by the Treasurer's Office?
I can, and I wish I had my little spreadsheet with my numbers. So can, um, can, um, consultant, so probably half of that consulting cost is a consultant that does employee training and development with us. And contracted services, these would be things like, oh, friend, I should have studied this a little bit. I can get, I can follow up with you on what specifically these are.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's all.
Councilman Philaji.
Thank you very much, and Chairman Paul Messina, and both of you for coming in. I'm, we do also interact, not just once a year on council, so I have talked to you guys a lot, and thank you for all of your efforts. There's some definitely high points, clearly, that pay stub and making it electronic, I am, couldn't be more pleased, just because of the amount of mail that I don't still receive in my home, right? And I imagine that it is a cost savings. Going to the black and white instead of the high glossy, that's got to also be a great expense that you're, I mean, a cost savings, so thank you. And I have to say, you are looking. You are definitely looking for the cost savings. And we encourage you, everybody up here, to continue to do that. But to piggyback off of Councilman Bada, you know, and this isn't a gotcha moment, so we would like you to, if you could circle back around with us on the $304,000 for the contracted services, and maybe get a little more specific on that, and also give us a context of what these, because I don't have it in front of me, I can look at my book from last year, but if you can, can give us a context of the '25 budget, what that looked like, the contracted services, right?
Sure. And it'll, it'll be, so something that used to happen is a lot of things got dumped into the contracted services bucket, so I bet that bucket looked like 600,000 last year, but the, maybe the financial services were in there, maybe the lawyers were in there. So overall, these services are going down by about 200,000 between these sets of services, but I'll, I'll get the detail later today and get it over to you.
And just in a, from a contextual perspective, because I'm getting very good at federing, or federing out the, is that the right word, contracted services? And not that I'm looking as heavily in your department, but in the administration, I mean, I'm taking a microscope to see what some of these contracted services are, because they do kind of bunch it all in, and we have to look at that. I mean, that's where great, that particular code in, in the, if you add it all up throughout the county, that's huge, and we have to, we have to know what we're spending this on. And not to neb into it, but there's opportunities for savings. It sounds like you're taking those opportunities. We have to make sure everybody is. But do you then, you're, are you telling us you think that those, these contracted services might even continue to decrease, or over the years, or is this where it's plateauing?
I am hoping to bring, and I'm not supposed to say this out loud in public, but I am hoping to bring a lower budget each year for the next few years.
Okay. So then one more issue, because I am the Assessment Practices Chair, it is about these tax bills.
Yep.
You know, you've been the treasurer. We've had to extend the time for the tax bills to be returned, and it's an optic, as well as, we're, we're, we're making sure that we're getting the revenue in when we, we need it to be in, so it can start compounding as well. So that's money. And then the optic of the residents not knowing what this means, you know? And, and why is this occurring? And it's confusing, and the explanation, I don't, I know I'm not prepared to give an adequate explanation to everyone sometimes, and I'm the assessment chair, let alone my colleagues on council. So what are some assurances that you were able to give us that it's going to be on time and we're not going to have to extend it? Could you, you know, expound on that?
Yeah. So I had my staff pull about the last 15 years of tax mailing dates, and, and in that time, never were the bills fully mailed out in January. There were a couple of years where they started, but most years, they started getting mailed out in February, and they went out in February. So just, just like as a-
Contextual.
As a contextual background, right, these bills have always been going out as February bills. And part of the reason that happens is the vendors they were using were, it took about two weeks to print the bills and about two weeks to mail the bills. So that's a month.
Yeah.
And the, and we get the assessment data from the County Assessment Office. They're statutorily required to give it to us by January 15th, and they typically do it on like a Thursday, right? So you get it somewhere between like the 9th and the 15th, depending on when the Thursday is. And then our office and most, like, most of the years predate me, so I can only speak to 2024 when the process was sort of well underway, when, when I got there. And 2025, there'd been some issues with our software that we keep all the data in, and pulling out the extract, I think at its worst point was taking about a week, right? So it's like, you have the data on the 15th, it takes a week to put the data in our computer and get it back out, then it takes two weeks to print, two weeks to mail, and you're mailing these things out in February. And so something that was already underway when we came into office and we made, we kept focusing on it and focusing the IT staff on it, is to both reduce the time on that extract. So now it's a few-hour matter. And then what was still occurring, including this year, is we had some manual processes between when we pull the data out and when it is a ready file for the printers. And that, that set of steps has been turned into a, a computer program. And so we used it when we pulled the summer late notices for tax bills, and then when we sent the next batch of late notices, I think last month. And in both times, that worked well, right? So it's just like we're taking a couple hours to do the thing, as opposed to it being a few days and a potential for error. So at this point, we're quite hopeful, based on what I feel like is good evidence, that we'll be able to get the data in and out of our systems within a few days. And then the vendor that we're expected to be working with has committed that they have a five-day turnaround time, that they, they, they run volumes in the millions per month, right? So a $300,000, a 3,000, a 3,000 mailing piece project is just, you know, maybe it's like 5% of that month's work. So we expect that, we're very hopeful that that'll go well. So that's what we have done to endeavor to meet this January 31st deadline. And it's, you know, it's something I have, I was, I was disappointed our office wasn't able to meet that earlier this year, and so we have dedicated a lot of resources to make sure we can, because I think you're right. Nobody wants to change the deadline. It's, it's frustrating on every level, especially to residents. It makes things much more inefficient in a lot of ways, and it does like lose us interest on the money that we receive later when the deadlines get extended. Does that answer your question?
It does. And thank you very much for the explanation. I have nothing further. Thanks.
Thank you. President Cuttino.
Thank you. Just a few questions for you, Treasurer. Were there any issues with last year's bills, any mistakes being made after they were sent out, any problems with the files, anything like that that you're aware of?
In the bills that were sent in 2025, I think there was a segment of, if I'm remembering correctly, there was a segment of senior bills that the addresses were, the addresses were inaccurate, so they, I think they had the right street address, but maybe the wrong town or the wrong zip code. And so I think, I want to say like a thousand of those? About a thousand of those got mailed before that error was identified, and then they were reprinted, corrected, reprinted, and mailed. With our, with the vendor we expect to work with, they have a number of address verification tools that were, have not been available to us with our prior vendors. So we, we think two things, right? The soft, the program we've put together to pull the data won't make that mistake, and then there's a secondary check by the print mail vendor to catch if somehow a mistake had been made.
So that was the only instance then of mistakes being made last year?
Um.
Uh, I mean, I'll let you guys answer. I mean-
I mean, I know we, we had removed the homestead exemption from the bill.
Anything with dog licenses or anything like that, or anything?
Did we do anything wrong with dog licenses? Is that your question?
I mean, any, I mean, were there any other issues last year that you're aware of?
Um.
Well, any, any issues within the, anything going out of the office that went out in error?
In calendar year 2025?
Yes.
I, I'm told there were typos in dog licenses. Was this like the-
Mistakes in dog licenses, then?
What, in the form itself?
Not that there was typos, um, I mean, this year? Not this year.
You can get back to me on this. It seems like, it seems like your staff knows more than you, so you can get back to me on this, so that's not a problem.
Okay. So the question was what errors has our office made in 2025?
What errors? If you could let me know, because there seems like there's more than, unfortunately, I mean, it seems like more is coming out at this point. So the last two years, the printer that you did use, were they a union shop or no? Obviously Pittsburgh's very pro-union, so I just wanted-
No, I understand that. I, we, we've been using the shops that were prior, previously used by the Treasurer. I can check on if they were union or not.
Okay. Can you let me check on that? Okay. Unclaimed property, I mean, I understand the benefit to trying to do that, but is that really a, do you really think that's the core function of the Treasurer's Office?
I think our, I, I think providing for our citizens is a, is a core, is core work of the Treasurer's Office, to the extent, would I, would I add staff to do that work?
Or can we cut, or can we cut staff so it doesn't have to do that work?
Well, I'll finish, which is, you know, we have a person dedicating a portion of their time to doing that, and our plan is to routinize it in a way that we'll be able to deploy it to some of our other staff that have downtime currently. Like, our office has very seasonal work, and we've taken a lot of steps to, to utilize people more fully. And one of those steps is to have work that our, right, that our cashiers can do in a slow hour, right? Or that our call center reps, who are busy certain times of the year after we mail out certain mailings, but then there's other times where they have a lot less call volume. So what can we do to more fully deploy them? And I view that as a way to fully, more fully deploy the staff. I hear what you're saying. Is it worth having staff that do solely that, or have, and I, I would say we're just more fully-
Are there better functions that they could perform that are truly core functions of the Treasurer's Office, I guess is the question?
I think one of our core functions is to make sure we have good relationships with constituents and that they understand the work of the Treasurer's Office, and this is like a way we're exploring how to do that. So I don't think I'm doing a good, like, I think, yeah, I, I, like, it is a project that we're, that we're working on. I'm happy to discuss with you like how much employee time that is, or if you have concerns.
No, I, this is, this is, my concern is that I just want to make sure that we're getting the biggest return on investment, and I don't know if that's a core function of the Treasurer's Office. I mean, that's entirely up to you. But like I said, I just question that whether that's a truly a core function. My next question is, last year during the, it seemed like when the tax bills went out late, it seemed like that we all got a lot of complaints from residents, basically saying that, well, if county, and when they called the, when they called your office, actually, they were told by employees that, well, if County Council hadn't changed the tax deadline, we wouldn't have this problem, or if County Council hadn't raised the taxes, we wouldn't have this problem. I would certainly hope that's not the case, and that's certainly not true, and we wouldn't be advising staff to tell the county residents that.
I can get the language that we had staff give, if that is helpful to you.
Yeah, I would definitely hope that that wasn't being said. I mean, that, that being said, I'd like to go back to the contractual that Councilman Bada asked, and Councilman Philaji asked. I mean, this contract that, with Buchanan and Angersall that I saw signed, what, what exactly is that for? What services does that provide?
They provide government relation services, and so-
What does that mean?
Yeah. A lot of it so far has been helping us navigate the, like, building a working relationship with the State Treasurer's Office. They've helped us provide some, some good contacts for relationships around the Working Group for Pension Funding. Sorry, with, on the pension, they've, they helped me get to some very good folks that could provide me some pension background for the role I play on the County Treasurer's Board.
So like, would you say they're lobbying then, or?
I think at this point, they're mostly providing us connections to government folks or providing us with information on how different segments of government are working. At some point, I would expect it would move to lobbying, and that might be at the point where, if or when the Retirement Board chooses to pursue any sort of change with the state, if there's a point where we're interested in moving forward a change in the income limit on the senior tax credit. So I think at the state level, it, it helps us to be connected with the legislature and also with local municipalities, and having an understanding of how state government that we interact with works.
Do we need a separate contract for that when the county already has someone on the payroll to basically do that function?
Um, I, I am not a, aware of someone on the payroll who does that, who, who reports to me.
No, they don't report to you, but the county already has a firm that I believe that they use for, that could probably assist with that, so that's why I'm questioning this $50,000.
Yeah. It's, my understanding is that it's typical for different electeds to have different firms. They have different objectives.
Is this a new position, or is this a new contract, or is this how?
This contract, we started, I think, in probably August 1st of last year.
Okay. And how long's the contract for?
It was originally a 12-month contract with a month-to-month, and we're working with our lawyer to extend it for, I think, another three years.
I mean, because that potentially could be some cost savings as well, if we could use the county's resources for that, and we didn't need to renew that contract. I'm just looking for cost saves.
Sure.
I mean, obviously, we have. We're a big county, and we need to try to figure out how we live within our means.
I understand that. And I have brought you a budget that's 2% less, that's drawing on a number of savings, that's bringing a lot of revenue, and-
You did, you, I, I, I like that, but I always think there's, I always like to push people for more.
I agree. But, and, and I have, I have moments, right, where I'm like, are we, are we getting what we need? Their connections brought to us an amazing, I believe, consultant that is going to be doing work for the pension plan, and, and that alone, to me, is worth a year's fee, like, and, and it's, it can be hard to quantify those things at times, but I do believe it is money well spent. It, it got us the right conversations with the State Treasurer's Office to do a lot more, much more efficient things, and I wouldn't have gotten there, it would have taken me another year and a half to have sorted that out myself.
But the county couldn't assist in that because it's a county pension overall, so rather than just the Treasurer's Office? So that's where I'm going, I mean, it's a big county, and obviously, that's where I'm sort of confused about. I mean, just the Treasurer's Office versus using the county resources to lobby on behalf of the entire county, or to go get, get your questions answered on behalf of the entire county, per se?
Um, it's a great question, and I'm happy to take it back.
Okay. I mean, that's just something that I'd, I'd like you to look at, obviously. I mean, I think that's, and we just need to challenge ourselves at every, every chance we have. It, it's nothing, I'm not saying you're doing anything wrong, I'm just saying we can, we just need to challenge ourselves. That's all I'm saying. So that's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. I was getting ready, I was getting ready to cut you off.
You're going to call me Bethany.
And I know, no. I usually cut her off. She'll be on at me. Councilman- Councilman Grisbeck.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam Treasurer, very much. Appreciate your presentation, all the work that your office has done. It's nice to see that the Treasurer's Office be brought into the 21st century a bit here with some of the reductions that you've had in expenditures and also moving things electronically. You know, your presentations both last year and this year, it was a bit baffling to hear all the money that was being wasted in this office, so it's, it's nice to see an actual reduction in a department. Some, some of the questions had me, you know, looking back at our budget and making sure that I wasn't remembering correctly, because, you know, I would have thought that you were looking at a 5% or more increase in your budget this year rather than a 1.7% decrease. So thank you for that. One question I had was, have you sent out the notifications to all of the chiefs to make sure that they finalize their eligibility list for the volunteer tax credit by the end of the month?
My team tells me yes, we have.
Okay, great. Sounds good. I'll yell at my chief then, because he had not seen that yet. Just wanted to make sure that was indeed sent out. Probably a reminder to those folks in the next few days or next week, probably wouldn't hurt just to make sure that all the folks that are eligible for that program are indeed able to take advantage.
I'm also told the reminder's going out tomorrow.
Wonderful. And then same question that I've had for the other departments. Apologies if you have already addressed this, but was the roughly $9 million that you're getting proposed this year, is that the same amount that you requested?
It's a, it's a tiny bit less, but it is. It's about $50,000 less, but it's fine.
About how much less, sorry?
About $50,000 less.
Okay. And what, where, where would that money, that money have gone to?
Oh, that's a funny one. As I look at it a little more, personnel, but some of it was also just the fringe benefits on the original budget requests were different, which we don't even control. So it was, it was a slightly lower personnel budget.
All right. Understood. That's all my questions.
Turnover is, is okay.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dan. Councilwoman Hallam.
Thank you, Councilwoman Paul Messina. I assume I will also be getting 15 questions for the Treasurer like my president did, so I am going to start with those now.
No, actually, actually, I gave you seven the first night on Amy, so you should correct yourself. Thank you.
Okay. So thank you, Madam Treasurer. Really, I have two. My first one is, where do you see the biggest issues in undercollected potential revenue? And how could we go about improving it? Like, is it property taxes? Is it other taxes? Is it licensing fees? Or what do you think it is, and how could we improve it?
Thank you. So on the real estate tax side, we'll be putting out for bid this coming year. I think the bid will go, the RFP will go out in December. Our delinquent tax collection service, Jordan Tax, has been on an auto-renew every two years contract for 22 years. So that work will be going out for bid, and we anticipate, we anticipate that with some different methods, we'll be able to do better delinquent collections, which might bring some sort of first year to like hop up in delinquent tax. We're also on, on current tax years, we are, we've sent out, we sent out additional notices last year compared to the prior method. We're sending out a third set to the small group of usually pay but didn't pay yet this year folks. And on this last set that's going out in November, we're attaching some methods so that we can identify ways that communications can be more enticing to make people pay. So we're hoping to bring that onboard more thoroughly next year to increase collections when folks are late but not move to the next year, and that's all real estate tax. On special tax, so we collect the drink tax, we've kept a lot more entities current. We had an entity that was several years behind. Last year, we brought them to court. This year, they're almost paid off on their payment plan that ends in December. So we are in better compliance than in prior years, and this is the first year that we're working, again, with the Controller's Office to do audits. We think the regular doing of hotel audits will cause hotels to do better at their tax collection and remittance, so we're hopeful that'll bring what's probably a slight quiet change. Then we're also with, under our new director, Michael Horvath, we're, we're working to find ways to increase and improve the registrations for short-term rentals. That's under a county council ordinance, but not a lot of proactive work has been done on that historically. So we're looking at ways to do that. I think we, at this point, have the right team in place to do that. And so that will ideally bring more short-term tax collection, but I'll, I'll just note that that tax goes largely to Visit Pittsburgh and the SCA, so that's not, that potentially isn't a big bottom line for the county itself. Okay, I think that's, I think that's all for now. Do you have another question, Counselor Hallam?
Bethany, you have any more questions?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm sure you do.
That's all I have. She was on mute.
Thank you.
Oh, that's it?
Go ahead and ask your questions.
She said that was it?
I thought she said she had more. Bethany, you're done?
Okay, she's done.
I guess she's done. She went off? Okay. Well, thank you, Treasurer. Thank you, Deputy Solicitorian, and thank you, Deb Gibson in the back. I see a shout-out to you. How you doing? Kids are good? It's great to see you. If you don't mind, if you can get some of the...
Yep.
If you can, the questions that you said, if you can send them to Sarah, or can we appreciate that? Thank you for the, the information tonight.
Yeah.
And enjoy your evening.
Thanks so much.
You guys take care.